Seven o'clock, I would like to call to order the meeting of the zoning board of appeals, the village of Bartlett, counties of Cook, DuPage, and King. Please call the roll.
Mike Wearden?
Here.
Linda Hansen?
Here.
George Cozio?
Here.
Joe Vannell?
Here.
Bob McCarroll?
Here.
Jennifer Rasmussen?
Here.
You have before you the minutes from the December 6th meeting. Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by George, seconded by Joe? No, Bob? Okay, Bob.
Is it Bob?
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Linda Hansen?
Epstein.
George Cozio?
Yes.
Joe Vannell?
Yes.
Bob McCarroll?
Yes.
Jennifer Rasmussen?
Yes.
Mike Wearden?
Yes. We have three items on the agenda tonight. If you plan to speak, it would save time in swearing in if you fill out one of these forms. They are on the back table. There are also some up here on the speaker stand. So if you would just fill one of those out and bring them up to Kristi at the end, you can do that as soon as you fill it out. First item on the agenda, case number 18-22, Moreau's Crestview addition to Bartlett, lot 72. Are the petitioners present? Are the petitioners present? If you are the petitioner, you don't have to fill one out. Okay. Okay, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly affirm that the evidence you are about to give is only the whole truth?
Only the whole truth.
Okay. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ahmad. I'm the owner of J.C. Construction Corporation.
Is that microphone on?
Yeah. This is for Moreau's Crest, lot number 72.
Okay, and what would you like to do?
Just we are subdividing into two lots.
I'll kind of do a brief summary.
Okay, go ahead, Kristi.
This lot was originally part of Bartlett when it was incorporated in 1891. It was reported in 1926 as part of Moreau's Crestview's addition to Bartlett. The petitioner is proposing to subdivide it into two lots. It was before the plan commission on February 14th. The plan commission reviewed the plans and recommended approval of the planned subdivision. The two lots both meet the minimum lot width and size of the SR4 zoning district. The lot on... Lot 1 will have access off of North Avenue. Lot 2 will have access off of Chase Avenue. Because the property is less than three acres, no stormwater detention is required. The petitioner will be planting parkway trees along the right-of-way as required by the subdivision ordinance. They will also be improving the concrete sidewalks that are deteriorating along both streets. The petitioner is requesting two variations from the rear yard setback. They're requesting a four-foot variation on lot 1 to reduce it down to 41 feet, and a nine-foot reduction on the rear yard of lot 2 to reduce it to 36 feet. The property is consistent... The project is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and new addresses will be assigned to each lot. So the discussion here is for the two variance requests on lot 1 and 2.
I'm sorry, I neglected to ask. Do we have the evidence of the mailings, the newspaper article, and the pictures of the sign?
Yes.
Can you bring that tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay. We have the newspaper mailing and the pictures of the signs.
Okay, mark those exhibits A and B, and then he's going to get the rest to you tomorrow. Okay? Okay, so at this point, then, the... Let's see, I'm getting my bearings here. The lot 2 is going to face east, and the other one's going to face north. With the replacing of the sidewalks, I think we have a wider sidewalk now than we used to, so that will be up to today's code?
Yes. Yes. Okay.
Any questions from the board? At this point...
I have a question now. Does this meet the impervious surface requirement?
That will be looked at when an actual building permit comes in. Right now, they're asking for the variances without a specific building pad, so we don't... We can't do an impervious calculation without knowing how big the driveways are and the actual footprint of the proposed buildings.
All right. I also have a question. On the last page, maybe someone can set me straight, it seems to me that there's differences from one page to the other in the easement widths and also the setback of the houses on the North Avenue side.
I'm sorry, what's your question?
All right. There seems to me that there's a difference in the easement widths around the properties from one page to the other, and also the setback distance along East North Avenue.
No. It's a 25-foot building setback required. The building... The setbacks are shown on the... Are you looking at the proposed building location map?
Yeah, that page seems to show 25 feet, but the next page seems to show 35 feet.
That's showing what they're proposing, that a building would be set back 35 feet, but that's not... It technically could go to that 20-foot building setback line. He's proposing to do 35 feet so that it's in line with the other houses that are on Chase Avenue. But it's a recorded 25-foot building setback line.
So it's not going to be according to this page? It's going to be a 35-foot setback along North Avenue?
It is... The building setbacks required to be 25 feet. We cannot condition a variation. So what they're showing is 35-foot, but that's not something that we can restrict. They could go up to that 25-foot building setback line.
It also seems to me that these two houses are going to end up being very close to each other. There's only like a 10-foot distance between the two buildings.
Correct. The SR4 zoning district requires five-foot...
I understand that. We're not voting on that. I understand that. Okay.
Just a comment. It seems like this is a reasonable request to effectively use this land to build two residents on it.
At this point, I shall open it up to the public. Does anyone in the audience have any comments?
Hi. Amy, can you come up to the microphone, please?
Please state your name and address.
Amy Jayzian, 105 North Marion Avenue.
Okay.
So I'm pretty much on the left side where it says lot 61.
Mm-hmm.
So I was just wondering, like, how close this is going to come to our property line?
To your property line, they have to be at least 10 feet away because we're making that... They have to put in a 10-foot public utility easement.
Uh-huh.
So the building setback line, if you looked on the plan, says 5 feet, but they're not allowed to build within an easement, and the easement has to be 10 feet. So they'll be at least 10 feet away from your property line.
Are they planning maybe to build a fence, or it's just going to be open...
What?
Are they planning to build a fence, or is it just going to be open area of...
They don't... At this point, this is just asking for the variations. They haven't submitted any building permits for anything, so we don't know that yet.
How close? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Any further discussion or recommendations from the board?
I would make a motion to pass along a positive recommendation to the village board for item 18-22, the re-subdivision of lot 72, Moreau's Crestview addition to Bartlett.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. I shall close the public hearing portion. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by George, seconded by Joe. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
George Cozio?
Yes.
Joe Vannell?
Yes.
McCarroll?
Yes.
Jennifer Rasmussen?
Yes.
Mike Wearden?
Yes.
Linda Hansen?
Yes.
Okay, we shall pass on a positive recommendation to the village board. Stay in touch with Kristi to find out when it appears on their agenda. I'm guessing maybe April 2nd?
We don't know yet. We don't know. We don't know the agenda.
We don't know yet, okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is case number 18-24, Stearns and Munger. Are the petitioners present? Please step up to the microphone. Do you solemnly affirm that the evidence you are about to give is only the whole truth?
I agree.
Okay, and do we have the evidence of the mailings, the newspaper article, and the picture of the sign?
Sweetheart.
Mark those exhibits A, B, and C. There's also a letter here from the Forest Preserve District of DuPage County. Mark that exhibit D. One concern they have, which says the final landscape plan includes cornelian cherry, which is considered an invasive species that the district recommends against using. An alternative to this species is silky dogwood or red osier dogwood. And then they have some other concerns about the sealants on the lac top, making sure they're against coal tar products. If you can see that, that'll be in the record. Go ahead and state your name and address for the record and present your case.
I think first, address...
You can give the business address. It doesn't have to be your residence.
There it is. There you go. Do you want me to do that again?
Go ahead, again.
Ethan Frisch, 7325 Janes Avenue, Woodbridge, Illinois 60517. We will make those changes. We obviously just saw them today, so I think we're fine changing the species for landscaping.
Are you going to be speaking too? Go ahead and give your name and address.
Erin Martel, Logistics Property Company, 1 North Whacker, Chicago, Illinois 60606.
Okay, go ahead. All right, Kristi, are you going to summarize?
I'm going to... I'll start with this one.
Okay.
Did you swear?
Yeah.
So this is for the property at the corner of Munger Road and Stearns Road. The property was annexed into the village in 1966 and was originally zoned R1, which is single-family. The following year, it was rezoned to the manufacturing zoning district. In 1978, as part of the village's comprehensive plan, the property was rezoned to the OR office research and SR5 suburban residence, multi-family zoning district. The petitioner is going to be going before the plan commission next Thursday to discuss the rezoning as well as the plat of subdivision. They're proposing to make a three-lot subdivision. Lots 1 and 2 would each contain a 207,000-square-foot building, and lot 3, which is the one closest to the residences to the east, will be for a detention lot. The plan commission will be reviewing lots 1 and 2 as part of the site plan review next week. They are proposing to have two curb cuts on Stearns Road. The easternmost one will be a right-in, right-out for passenger vehicles only. The other one on Stearns will be a full access, and then Munger Road will be a right-in, right-out, and left-out. They are proposing retaining walls along the north property lines. Let's see. The site plan for lot 1 identifies 222 parking spaces. Lot 1 requires 234 parking spaces. The site plan for lot 2 identifies 246 spaces, which exceeds the requirement of 234 spaces. Overall, between the two lots, they're required to have 468 spaces, which they have provided. Because the lot 1 is short on its own, we're requiring them to go through the variation request. They will be providing a shared parking agreement, which will be recorded between lots 1 and 2. So overall, between the two lots, there is enough parking to meet the requirement, but because it's a subdivision, one lot is short, the other lot exceeds it. They will also be putting in a bike path along Stearns Road. The detention basin will be a wetland bottom, which is currently being reviewed by the village engineer. The traffic impact analysis has been submitted to our traffic consultant and to the DuPage County Highway Department. They've pretty much agreed with the findings that are outlined in the traffic study, and they've worked... The petitioner has worked with them to address all of their concerns. Staff is currently reviewing the landscape, photometric, and engineering plans. Like I said before, the plan commission will be reviewing the rezoning, the subdivision, a special use to fill in two small wetlands on the site. The only thing being requested tonight is the variation request.
Okay. The... For the record, the proposed detention spot, that would correspond as part of the SR5 zoning right now? That's where that would be sitting, in that area?
Correct.
And SR5 zoning would allow what type of construction? Multi-family?
Correct.
All right. So now, this is pretty much bringing this consistent with the rest of the industrial part?
Correct.
Okay.
Which is consistent with what our comprehensive plan shows and what the West Bartlett Road corridor plan showed.
Okay. Any further questions from the board? Okay, at this point, I shall open this up to the public, and remember, address the comments strictly to the parking issue. We are not dealing with anything to do with the buildings or the landscaping or anything like that. That will be next week at the plan commission meeting, same time, 7 o'clock, Thursday the If you filled out one of those forms, go ahead.
Rick Herring?
Step up to the microphone. We don't have to swear to you in because of filling it out. I just, when you get to the microphone, just state your name and address.
Rick Herring, 1237 Linfield Lane, Bartlett. I didn't know that the discussion night was only on the parking lot side of things, so...
Okay.
Just a question, I guess, for the board. The other findings, like the traffic study and things like that, will that be published somewhere, or where does that show up?
It will be included when we put out our plan commission packet tomorrow. It'll be part of that packet, which will be available online.
Okay, so that'll be the same spot that these plans were?
Correct.
Right, and that'll be addressed next week.
Okay. Thank you.
Robert Miller? Is he here?
One people left. He might have left.
John Martin?
Basically, I had the same issues with... As Rick did, we're preparing a statement for next week's public hearing. Regarding parking, obviously, there's not an issue with the shared parking. Our biggest concern is going to be traffic. So I think, as Rick stated, we'd like to see that traffic report as well. We have no objections to what's going on at Brewster Creek. We certainly appreciate the fact that the village... I worked for many years as a land planner for gen land design. I was the vice president for 30 years. I've worked in Bartlett on many projects. We did, designed Haron's Landing. We did Lexington's Fairfax crossings. We've worked on timber line up and off of, across from the bills of Vill Olivia. So I'm familiar with Bartlett. I'm familiar with the developments going on, and I was here when the Brewster Creek was originally proposed. We love where Brewster Creek is. It's out past the intersection of Munger and Stearns, and that's where we'd like to see it stay and not come east of Stearns and Munger. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be back next week.
Thank you for your comments.
Joseph, is it Keeler?
Hello, Joseph Kyler, 860 Middleton Lane, in the subdivision just to the east of the property there. The questions I have for, as for the parking, I noticed that the parking line out there is approximately, I would guess, 100 feet based on a scale from Linfield Lane, and as cars... As a resident coming out there trying to make a right turn, there is a potential snow problem if there was a lot of snow on a parking lot, and if there's a snow plan being proposed at all at this point, would a snow plan push the snow between the end of the parking lot and Linfield Lane, blocking that right turn so you can't see too much coming out?
I think that would be more of a valid question for next week, for them to address, because that's not part of the proposal tonight.
That's all I have for parking. Thanks.
That's all we had.
That's all we have? Okay. Just make a comment on parking issues. So many times, in whatever development there is, they try to squeeze too much building on too small a parcel, and they wind up having parking in what we call the side yard or something like that, meaning they're going to reduce the landscaping. So it's always a welcome sight when you see usually some type of reduction in parking because generally that means more green space, and the place is going to have more eye appeal, at least in my opinion. And this shared parking agreement will be a good thing, whatever gets developed there. A lot of our parking issues and what went into planning considered things when there were more employees, more customers. Now, a lot of things are online, and you don't necessarily have the foot traffic going into buildings that you once did. So that's why it's... We're able to reduce parking and not have a problem because we certainly don't want the streets clogged with people parking and causing congestion. Any further discussion or motions?
Just a couple of comments. I believe this is Cook County. Is that true?
DuPage. No, this is DuPage.
DuPage. In either case, I'm glad to see that the property is going to be developed. This is kind of a unique parking proposal. Usually, we're looking for more parking, and I think it's creative that we're going to share 12 spaces, in effect, between the two properties. And in reality, maybe you'll never hit that number, the maximum for the two properties. So I think the sharing is a good way to go.
You said that this was brought into the village in '66?
Correct.
And then it was changed to manufacturing in '67?
Correct.
And how about the development to the east, the Weathersfield?
That came in in '88.
Okay.
1988.
Long after this was already being developed as business?
Correct.
Anyone else? Any motions?
I move that we pass along a positive recommendation for item number 18-24.
It's been moved by Joe to pass on a positive recommendation. I'll close the public hearing portion. Any seconds?
Second.
Seconded by George. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Joe Vannell?
Yes.
Bob McCarroll?
Yes.
Jennifer Rasmussen?
Yes.
Mike Wearden?
Yes.
Linda Hansen?
Yes.
George Cozio?
Yes.
Okay, we shall pass on a positive recommendation to the village board for the parking. Stay in touch with Kristi to find out when it appears on the agenda. Next item on the agenda, case number 19-04, Streets of Bartlett. Are the petitioners present? Please step up to the microphone. Do you solemnly affirm that the evidence you are about to give is only the whole truth?
Yes.
Do we have the evidence of the mailings, the newspaper article, pictures of the sign? Mark those as exhibits A, B, and C. Please state your name and address for the record.
Manny Rafidia, Two Star Lane, South Barrington, Illinois.
Okay, go ahead and present your case.
I think I'm going to give this one.
Okay, go ahead, Roberta.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
You can sit down if you want.
All right.
The petitioner is proposing to renovate just under 32,000 square feet of the existing building in the former grocery space and create a new 22,000-square-foot entertainment center oriented west towards the parking lot, and three new commercial spaces oriented south towards east of Van Avenue. The three new tenant spaces will include a 4,000-square-foot wine and liquor store, a 3,900-square-foot restaurant, and a 1,300-square-foot space for future retail. Petitioner is requesting a third site plan, PUD amendment, to create a conceptual commercial building pad for a possible grocer or banquet facility, and to add parking in the southwest corner of the parcel where grass currently exists, previously shown as a possible future development on the 1988 site plan. The petitioner has stated the area for the conceptual commercial building pad will not be subdivided or sold off. They propose to modify the current shopping center name from the Bartlett Plaza Shopping Center to the Streets of Bartlett, and are proposing renovations, including covering the existing metal roofs with a parapet wall and incorporating varying roof lines and accent lighting on the facade to update the building elevations. The three new commercial spaces facing south will have new windows, doors, and a sidewalk, and an outdoor dining area where a brick wall currently exists. In creating the conceptual commercial building pad, 159 parking spaces would be removed from the existing site. However, by transforming the existing grass area in the southwest corner of the property to parking, approximately 30 new parking spaces would be added back to the total number. So the petitioner tonight is asking for a variation to reduce the required parking spaces from the required 525 to 406, included in your packet as a summary of those parking numbers. And staff has done some research on the current uses existing in the building and the proposed uses, and you can see we've totaled those up to actually a total of 381 parking spaces. So they would be under the total 406 spaces even with the variation request.
Say that last...
Well, I'll just... Okay, so the uses, what we did is, we actually went out and the existing uses as they are today, based upon what's in the center today, would require 381 parking stalls. And even with the variation of the 119 spaces being removed, they would have 406. Access to the site from Main Street, east of Van and south Berto would remain the same, and internal circulation would be modified slightly along the south elevation of the new commercial uses, where the drive aisle would become a one-way in order to accommodate a sidewalk and the outdoor seating area. Three additional variations are being requested for the proposed monument signs. The first one is a 20-square-foot increase from the maximum permitted 100-square-foot allowable sign area for each monument signs. So therefore, these would be 120 square feet. A two-foot increase in the maximum permitted 10-foot height to allow both monument signs to be 12 feet in height, and a two-foot reduction in the required five-foot setback along Van Avenue. And staff would be working with petitioner to ensure the sign locations will be safe and provide clear visibility. The petitioner is also requesting special use permits. Those include packaged liquor sales, excluding within 100 feet of a school, serving alcohol including wine tastings, also excluding within 100 feet of a school, recreation and amusement establishments, live entertainment, banquet hall facility, outdoor seating, and a pet daycare. outdoor seating area will be required if any alcohol is to be served outside. Petitioner is requesting special use permits for a banquet hall facility and a pet daycare. These uses are not currently proposed, but the petitioner is requesting the special use permits to have the option to attract these users to fill any vacancies. And a detailed review of these uses would be required by the staff at building permit submittals, and we would then be reviewing parking and any other issues that might come up that we would need to look at. As part of the redevelopment improvements for the shopping center, the petitioner proposes to replace the existing parking lot lights within the down, with the downtown light fixtures to tie this center to the existing downtown improvements. This was something that staff had asked of the petitioner to do, and he has agreed to do that. A site plan will be required to be submitted for the commercial building pad once additional details are finalized for its development. And if there are no additional special uses and or variations being requested, this will be reviewed as an administrative site plan and will be submitted directly as a building permit application. And finally, landscape and photometric plans are currently being reviewed by the staff. Petitioner is here tonight. If you have any questions, I'm sure he could be more than happy to answer those.
I just wanted to make a positive comment as a side issue. I see that Joe and Andrew Gorsky are in the audience, and I just hit the lever in my chair, sunk cold on here. I am so glad to see something come up that is not going to tear down the shopping center or destroy what was originally Gorsky's food store. That was always a positive thing in Bartlett. I thought you used beautiful brick at the time. That was not common in a lot of shopping centers. And you even had the back of the buildings, most of them were brick and not cinder block. And it, you had a wonderful store and a wonderful produce section that beat others that were in the area. And I, for years, I've worried that that was going to be bulldozed and something else come in, so I'm glad to see something be able to take it over and renovate it and, and still retain the beauty that it's always had. Years ago, there were a lot of trees and bushes in the parking lot, and I certainly hope that we get landscaping back in there. And I'm glad to see that the petitioner has agreed to put the same period-style lighting in there that we have in that part of the town. Any comments from the board?
I've been a resident of Bartlett for 30 years. I've seen this, this area when it was a thriving business. I've seen it go through a lot of change. I've seen some come back. And now, I'm really excited to see that it's going to be brought back to life, something really unique, different. Hopefully, it'll become a destination for lots of other people to come to, because we'll have something like this and other communities won't. So that's a good thing for the entire community and the development there, that, that particular plaza. So, thank you, and I'm really excited to see how this proceeds.
Anyone else?
Yes, I'm glad to see that, you know, something that is being proposed at that location. But I do have a problem with the proposed monument signs variation requests. I think they're going to impact safety, so I'm not too thrilled about that. And also, it looks like, you know, we're putting off to the future on what to do with parking, and there's not enough parking according to what's required. So again, I'm not too happy about that.
I just, I agree with George. It's a very unique concept, and in an area that needs some redevelopment. So I'm, from an overall project standpoint, you know, I think it's a good thing. The parking, with the study that was done and the usages that was done for current use, it shows that there'd be enough. Now, if that additional building is put up, that is not in this factor, factored into this?
That is correct, and we would be reevaluating that when that does come in, when it, if it comes in for a building permit, yes, we would take a look at that. If it needs a variation, we would come back to this board for that request. But we're not exactly sure what's going to go there, so until we know that, we, it's difficult for us to calculate that parking requirement.
Right. And that would likely be an issue after some of these other projects got done, right?
That's correct.
Does he have a bearing?
Right.
So it could be years off, or it could be soon.
Right.
But so, so the, the parking projection right now should meet what is being proposed before us tonight?
That's correct.
I'm comfortable with the numbers that staff has, has reported to us, that there's a few more spaces than are actually calculated or required. And there seems to be some trending going where there's not as strong a requirement for maximum buildout of parking. So when I look at this, and I, and I see the numbers for each use, you're, you're not going to have each use maxed out at, at any one time. So again, the concept of, of sharing parking, I, I think it's a good idea and a workable idea.
I think Joe has a valid point about the, some of the variations perhaps on the sign, but there are a lot of tenants in that shopping center also, more than what we have in, in any nearby. So I don't know what an alternative might be.
Well, I, I can tell you that the sign that was originally proposed was quite a bit larger, quite a bit taller, and the petitioner has really worked well with staff, bringing that sign down in height and in size. He actually has, at our request, put in the brick base and the surrounding to make it architecturally complement the center. So he has done everything that staff has asked him to do with regards to the signage.
A little bit unusual, so that's, that's a good comment. Thank you. Any further questions or comments or concerns?
Just then, from a safety standpoint, staff would be involved in the location.
Absolutely. It has not been determined exactly where the placement of those signs would be. We want to make sure that it is not going to obstruct vision and any curb cut, and we want to ensure that it's set back far enough so that it doesn't...
At this point, I shall open it up to the public. Does anyone in the audience have any comments? On any aspect?
As a Bartlett resident...
State your name and address again.
Joseph Kyler, 860 Middleton Lane, Bartlett, Illinois.
Okay.
As, as a resident that frequents that shopping center, if you will, I have noticed a hedge along the sidewalk. That hedge is quite large, and when you try to exit the area on that hedge closer to CBS, it's very difficult to see if anybody's on the sidewalk as well, if there could be any kind of repair or cosmetic improvements to that hedge, so it doesn't block the sidewalk. If people are riding their bikes or sidewalks, it would be probably a good idea. It may be looking to.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
The petitioner is here. Mr. Rafidia, do you have anything you would like to say to the board?
I, I just am very happy to come in town here and be part of this new development, and I hope that I can achieve a goal that can help the community and make this feasibly profitable as a businessman. So I look for your help to, you know, work with me on this, and I'll be willing to listen to any recommendation that you offer and work with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know at one time, there was hopes that a TIF district might be able to help you out, and that never, the, the other TIF district did not come into being. So I think this is a wonderful idea to keep the shopping center from being torn down or altered in such a way that it wouldn't fit in maybe with other things. Anyone else?
I was part of the TODG group, which was the downtown development plan or looking forward to what might possibly be done. And this, this plaza being at the south end of that, we were, we were, there were a lot of discussions as to what could happen, and I, I think it's just a great way to bring more focus to the south end of town. I wish you all the best. It, it's got to work.
Any motions or further discussion?
I would make a motion to pass along a positive recommendation to the board for item number 19-04, the Streets of Bartlett.
Okay, we have a recommendation on the floor. At this point, I shall close the public hearing portion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call, Linda, second it. Please call the roll.
Boba Carl?
Yes.
Jennifer Rasmussen?
Yes.
Mike Warden?
Yes.
Linda Hanson? I'm sorry. George Coziel?
Yes.
And Joe Vannell?
No.
I didn't hear my name called.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yes. Oh, I thought she did. It was like, wait a second.
Okay, so five to one. We'll pass, pass on a positive recommendation to the board. Stay in touch with Christie to find out when it appears on the agenda. All business, new business, and then coming up. Good luck with everything. Does it look like a meeting next month?
We're not sure just yet.
Okay.
Let's see. We've got a lot of stuff going on.
I see that. We haven't had a lively one like this for a while.
We've been busy, yes.
Any motions to adjourn?
It's all moved.
They're moved? Second it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.[1672.73]